...on Wednesday, March 11, 2015, by 30 places, Cleveland City Council, City Hall, Council chambers, and courtroom. Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Counselor King.
The President.
Counselor Baker. He just said he wasn't very close up on his table. Counselor Button.
The President.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
And Counselor Thomas. Here.
He is now.
Let's record reflect that Councilman Mansell Baker has arrived and is sitting down. Remarks of the public on agenda and assembly, hearings, conduct, and scheduling. Reports and announcements from the mayor. All business. New business. Research and communication.
New business you have written for you. It's the draft legislation. Council's proposed draft legislation, which is number 1517. They all the councilors got my email. They're requested to look it over and as you all were working on it.
Yes, ma'am, it's a draft.
Yes.
Okay, we have a draft resolution that the President has requested be put to form by the Law Director. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, would you please read this into the record?
The Law Director hasn't worked on it. We've, uh, council offices.
I understand that.
She'll approve to form it. We're proposing a resolution requiring the administration to enter into immediate discussions with creditors and stakeholders currently on the accounts payable list in order to negotiate a substantially lower amount owed to or arrange payment agreements with said creditors and stakeholders on the city of East Cleveland's accounts payable list and declaring an emergency for the public safety and welfare of the city residents.
Okay. Is that all we have, Madam Chair?
I'd like to entertain discussion on that.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I forget when we were on the regular.
Yeah, no, this is just for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 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 okay.
Just discussion.
Go ahead and discuss.
I'm grateful the city seeks legislation in order to put some, uh, share some light to our fiscal issues with the city. We definitely would need to talk to our creditors. I noticed that the council would enlarge our request for this legislation to be drafted in the law department. But I noticed that it's sponsored by just Councilman Martin. I would like, you know, when it's drafted, then it replace.
Well, we were going to request.
No, I'm just saying.
Oh, okay.
I would like for it to say all five council people invest, no problem to you guys, because I know that you do anything necessary to save East Cleveland, right? So if it can reflect Councilman, uh, Daniel Martin, Councilman Mansell Baker, Councilman Brandon King again, and Councilwoman Barbara J. Thomas on the legislation.
She's already.
Uh, once it's, once it goes forward, and I'm sure we, you know, are in agreement that it discusses so that the public understands, it discusses three options, not just limited to a merger of the city, but it has an option in there to talk with the creditors and also the bankruptcy option. So as the public joins in with us to save the fair city of East Cleveland, we hope that you support us on this legislation. All right? So one that comes forward.
I'd like to make comment on this.
Go ahead.
I, you know, I got some questions. I was reading it earlier, and my thing is, I think this is like passing resolutions that has motif. I mean, I don't think that we can actually make the mayor go and negotiate with creditors to something that passes here. And so I pray that I'm wrong, but I just think that it's trying to tell the administration how to run if there's the operation. I pray that I'm wrong.
I'm not going to correct you about being wrong, but I am going to correct you in the area that Yost put out there, three options. And one of those options, one of those options was to deal with asking your creditors to negotiate with your creditors on lowering the balance and seeing if you could get a lower, they could give a lower payment. We're not getting anything right now, vice president Wheeler. And on the flip side of that, it's not about having teeth. It's something that you should be doing anyway to see if you all can come to some agreement because you got all these outstanding bills out here. And when I talked to, uh, Nita and Tish, who is the financial manager on the commission, and talked to Director Johnson, who is the finance director, Director Johnson was in the process of putting together a list. So I think it's appropriate that you deal with this and say that this is something that you want to do and it is involving yourself in doing that. And if you don't do that, you're still sitting here in silence and saying, okay, whatever you decide you want to do, not making the, the mayor do anything, it's something that he should be doing in the first place to see what he can do and exploring all options. And you one of those that said, let's explore all options, but you never called your creditors to the table to sit down and talk to them. So that's the way I view it. And I think that if you don't call attention to it, and the next thing, I would agree with you, Councilman Mansell Baker, I would ask the Chair of the Democratic Ward Club to enlist the people in that club to, um, and the different wards to send out a mailing so that they could be at these council meetings to see just what is being put out there and what we're trying to do. And maybe they will understand others than just at the commission meeting. Okay? You get it? Anybody?
My, 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 my thing is, I do agree that you parents, and all the options would be on the table. I just didn't know that we could pass a resolution that can make the mayor do that, or it's just to bring awareness to the public if that's the objective.
Yes. That's what it is.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Counselor King.
I would like, I would like to make a comment and then ask that we allow Mr. Mike Smith, the Chief of Staff, to weigh in on this. My comment is, I, I had a chance to read this and I like what it's doing, I like what it's trying to do. I'd agree with Wheeler. I don't, we can't force him, but I like what this is attempting to do, to say, look, we want you, we don't know what you're doing all day, but we want you to go out and do this and then let us know your progress on this. So I like, I like what it's doing. I don't know if it has any teeth either, but yes, I am in support of this.
First of all, we're not under my teeth. Let's take that off the table. You got a finance part of your legislative body. You're responsible for finances, okay? And when you have outstanding debts, which is causing problems for your city, and you're in emergency, and you're about to, some people go say, go down the tubes, don't you think that the financial arm of this legislative body should be enlisting the complete cooperation with administration, which should be done anyway, and say, okay, come on, it ain't about making him do anything. It's about saying, okay, you sat back, you haven't done nothing, you haven't even put in the budget that you should be putting in. We, we're waiting for, what is it? We're, you're still waiting for? We're still waiting for the recovery plan, and you haven't even brought the creditors to the table?
Madam Chair, I can allude on that as well. We're passing resolution, or vote on resolution seventeen dash fifteen, sixteen dash fifteen, and eighteen dash fifteen, all given some authorization of some sort for somebody to do something. This is well within our right, whether or not you think it to be reasonable or not, we pass legislation from a long time in East Cleveland to the current day. This is the democratic process, whether or not anybody respects it or not. So, you know, just be mindful of the statements that we make here. Our legislative authority is such, we can pass whatever we feel is necessary for the survival and the benefit of the residents of East Cleveland and the continuation of the city.
I am in total agreeance with that, you know, but it's, it's just like, we can't make, we can't even speak here.
If we can't speak like this, then we shouldn't pass anything else.
But I think.
Can someone, administration weigh in?
First of all, Mr. Chief of Staff, okay? First of all, this is a, a, a discussion between the councils up here. And I think basically we're leaving the, the intent of this is to say, do your job. That's all you're saying, is do your job. And if you're not doing your job, we want our residents to know that council is looking out for them. We are the spokespeople or the mouthpiece, so to speak, for our residents. They can't say, come up and say, well, do your job. You ain't, you, well, we don't know what creditors are doing. So if we're speaking, we're saying, the only way we can do it is through legislation. And half the time, the mayor ain't here, or half, no more than half the time. He's not here. He doesn't have the Chief of Staff to speak in some sort, except to raise his hand and want to be acknowledged. So, but my, my thing is that we are losing the intent. We're not trying to make anybody do anything. We're making, we're insisting that he do his job.
I think we're all on the same page.
Okay.
And, and, and I think we're all on the same page, and it was for discussion, so I wanted to get clarity of it, that's all.
And that's what you're supposed to do. If you don't ask, you're not willing to. Moving round along.
Martin had his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that this came about with a conversation between me and Mansell, and we basically came to the agreement that we speak through legislation. And what precipitated this was the fact that there's been a conversation in community, and I know Mr. Smith would speak to it, but the conversation is sitting around merger. Also, the public is aware that the merger issue is being pushed. Okay, well, the state, all of us stated that we had three options. Now, this group, and I know this group agrees with this, that we should look at all options, not just one. Number one, for the record, option one, intend to talk with creditors to lower amounts owed them. That's option number one. Option number two, file for bankruptcy, or, or lastly, option three, merger. What, the smart thing would be to do that, where it says requested by, I would like to see where it say requested by, with Barbara Thomas, the entire council, requested by entire council, because I think we all in agreement with this, and sponsored by the entire council too, not just Martin, that we need to present a uni, a unified front on this. I don't think anyone at this table really wants East Cleveland to merge if we can prevent that. Okay? That is the prayer of mine issue. I feel it from Wheeler, I feel it from King, I feel it from Barbara, I feel it from Mansell. So we have challenged the administration for the mayor's estimate, I think we never got, that we get every year. When we try to sit down with this body, with the administration, half the time the mayor's not here. When we passed the, the budget for the year, the mayor was not here. So not to, not to point your finger, but if we're going to save the city, Tom Wheeler, it's got to be all of us, these five and the, and the mayor. Okay? Uh, we've had a number of meetings throughout 2014, where nobody from the administration was here. But this is important because it's our responsibility as a body to look out for the interest of the people in the city. And if we don't have all three conversations, we're irresponsible. Okay? Uh, I don't know what's pushing this merger, it doesn't matter, but if we don't have all the conversations, to me, it's immunity issue. I attended the, the meeting with Noah, that Michael Smithly spoke about the merger that was facilitated by Treville Hart, that was basically a one-sided thing. Okay, that's my opinion. Okay? So I said, well, uh, my concern is, why are we just talking about the merger, Tom Wheeler? Why aren't we talking about all the other options? Okay? And they, and, and, and his saying, Noah's saying, they pick who the players are and all like that, and, and you don't really get a chance to finish it, and they shut me down twice. Okay? So, uh, we are united here on, on this, that we got to have this discussion, and we need to be thorough with it. I'm willing to assist Barbara Thomas, my, our group of the Democratic Club, and, which is all East Clevelanders, we can, we can arrange this, but if we have this conversation and they're not there, no need to have a conversation, because they have a responsibility to set this stuff up and be there. Okay? But if they've already taken the position that we need to merge, that has to be taken in consideration. So I want to thank my colleagues for, for this, everybody sitting at this table, and at this point, we have the responsibility to do everything we can to look at the three options. Okay? Should have took place longer than that. We should have sit down and done that. And I'm willing to work with anyone, Michael Smithly, Gary Norton, for us to have this conversation so we can, if we possibly can, save the city of East Cleveland. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for those, um, words of, um, strong words of going forward. But you've got to first understand that I just can't arbitrarily put somebody's name on legislation without asking, um, is it possible? Because, you know, one thing I've learned, and you've learned in the younger, don't call for the question if you don't have the votes. That's number one. So in order to do what you want to do and say, are you with me, I got to say to, to my councilors, do you want this? Everybody has read this. Is everybody willing to vote for this? Do you know the intent of it? And that quite some time ago, like I said, as the Chair of the Finance, I'm, I'm running down the finances, and I had Mr. Johnson to put together the list. He has the list of our creditors and how much they, we are owed, and, um, I think he went to the mayor and said to the mayor, let's call the creditors together. And as of that instant, nothing has taken place. So what we're going to do, we're not going to wait for anybody to do anything. We're going to take this forward, we get some more, and have it put to form by the Law Director, and we're going to go forward. I'm not even going to wait for the mayor to be in place somewhere. What I'm asking for is that, as all these councilors, we call our people together so that they can come and hear what is going on and what the council is doing. It's not about, uh, we've, I've joined in one meeting with the mayor, and that was because I felt that the mayor, uh, the residents of East Cleveland should know exactly what is taking place with the finances. So I did that. But I'm not in a, an agreement to go back again and call somebody else into this. This is the, if the council has got the resolution going, this is the council's business with the residents. And I think we all should send out information for the residents to come to the next, um, council meeting that this is going to be passed at. So I'm also, like I said, I'm asking the Democratic Ward Club leader to get on board. I'm asking the precinct committee people to get on board. I'm asking Mr. Strudlers to get on board and bring the people here, not just take them somewhere else and here somewhere else, and somebody comes in and passes the mic here. This is your show. So, um, if this is what we're going to do, Ms., uh, Councilman Baker, were you finished? Uh, Councilman King, were you finished?
This is the East Cleveland, like, it's not geared towards, if you were born and raised here, it should be your interest to help your city.
Yes.
Uh, like I said, I'm not willing to do anything outside of fighting. The lights got to go, the border has to go, and every employee, but we gone and buildings demolished before us supporting anything outside of that.
Okay.
The options were.
And we understand. What is it that you want to speak to, Mr. Chief of Staff?
We were having a discussion about a piece of legislation that you were creating. I just wanted to give some of what this, what the administration's position is on, that piece of legislation.
Well, uh, I don't think you can give the position, because the mayor has to give me, that has to give this council that position. Has the mayor given you the position to give to us?
Absolutely. That's why I'm here.
To give to us?
Sure.
Well, I have nothing from the mayor that says that you want to make a presentation on his behalf on this legislation.
If that's the new requirement, then, then so be it.
It's not a new requirement.
You had a piece of legislation, you were going to have a discussion about it, the Law Director couldn't come, so I was going to come.
I'm saying, and I'm saying, I'm saying that I have not heard anything from Ms. Spencer period. The law, the, uh, the mayor does not even give us anything pertaining, he don't hardly sign our, um, legislation. We're waiting for some legislation, but I'll find out. And with no, no intent.
I just want to give her perspective, that's all.
No disrespect to you, I'm just saying, I'm calling upon the administration to come forward and talk to this council and tell us what he thinks or.
Oh, you're calling him in particular. The, the administration is here. I'm here.
No, you're not the mayor. And he hasn't said anything about sending someone to speak. I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not debating, I'm just saying, if he can't come here and speak to us, I, I, I like my other council to agree that he doesn't come and speak to us in any form. So I'd like for him to respect us and say, I'm sending such and such a person to do this. I haven't heard from him. Have you guys heard?
No, I haven't heard from him.
Uh, Mr. Wheeler, you've got a good relationship with him, have you heard from?
No, I haven't heard.
Okay, Mr. King, have you heard from the mayor?
Is he aware of this document?
He has to be, unless he's on another planet.
Well, if this, if this Chief of Staff is aware that.
Were you aware of this document?
I became aware of it, yes.
Okay, so then he didn't send no back. Moving right along, do we have anything else to discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I dress that because of them?
Uh, did you, huh?
It's under new business.
It's under new business, and you had the opportunity for the.
The only thing I missed at the councilors had, any changes to the body.
It's still remarks on the public.
The only thing that I wanted to, if it's all right with the other councilors, is that since we unified, that we show where it say requested by the entire council and sponsored by the entire.
Yes.
Okay, we in, we in agreement with that, everyone?
I would, I would like my name co-sponsored.
Yeah, that's what I said.
So it will, it will re, requested by council of the whole.
Right.
Sponsored by each spot, each council will be listed separately as co-sponsors. There will be five co-sponsors.
We unified.
In, in the spirit of cooperation, we're in a disagree and working together, I don't see why we don't, we're having a conversation, I don't see why we.
But the conversation is not pertaining to the, uh, Mr. Smithly, without due respect to Mr. Smithly. And I'm still coming back and saying, and I want you to clearly understand what I'm saying. My intent is that if the mayor does not have enough respect.
Yes.
To come here and address this, or even send us a memo stating that I saw, I was, I'm aware of the resolution, I see the resolution, you're right, something should be done, and I will discuss it with my, uh, administration, with my staff, at our next staff meeting, and we will have an answer, something to that effect.
That's right.
I mean, just recognize the fact that he has to do business with this legislative body, which he has not been doing. So that's all I'm saying, Councilman King, and I respect Mr. Smithly to the utmost. I do. But I just don't respect you to have the complete authority to speak for the mayor, and he has not given it to you. Is there anything else?
Well, he handled that well.
The next round, communications and petitions. All right, well, before we report, that, that the two changes will be requested by council of the whole and co-sponsored by all five.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It has to be sponsored by one councilman.
Well, I'm requesting it, and it's sponsored by all, and let's get it on, okay? Because we're not going to miss words.
Then I will change that and send it out. Each council can hand me their copies.
We're on receipts.
Okay, under receipts and communications and petitions, office received a letter to council received on March 9, 2015, from a concerned resident requesting council send a letter to the Ohio State Auditor David Yost, Dave Yost, requesting the immediate termination of a fiscal commission board member. That letter is in your packet.
And for, um, for those that don't have this letter, which is our residence, the member of that board is Ms. Forth Fields. In actuality, Ms. Forth Fields should excuse herself, this is in the body of this letter, excuse herself, refuse her, I'm sorry, refuse herself from this critical board. It very is a pivotal time in the history of East Cleveland, and without the merger of Ms. Forth Fields' presence on the board is a major source of consternation, consternation, given her conflict of interest due to her immediate relationship with Mr. George Ford. So this letter is here, and it will be read in its totality.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday. Okay? Moving round along.
Reports on council committees, that will come next week, um, council. It's due to have a meeting tomorrow, at six.
Who?
On health and safety, Counselor Wheeler.
Yeah.
Um, there are no proclamations at this time.
Reports of council committees, I wasn't sure if it goes in new business or if it goes in reports of council committee, but I had a couple of things I needed to talk about. Where does it go?
Yours could go under, um, reports on council committee. Are you talking about these two new pieces of legislation?
Yes.
You can talk after I read the legislation, uh, sixteen fifteen, and we do discussion.
Okay, so after that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those came down later.
Okay, we don't have any proclamation. Legislation?
Resolution number sixteen fifteen will be, uh, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to sell certain inoperable surplus vehicles through auction to scrap dealers or to sell the complete lot of salvage city vehicles through competitive This is structured by Counselor King.
Counselor King, um, this is your resolution, what is your desire?
I would, I would like to discuss these, take these out of my committee and put in the agenda review for, uh, first read for next Tuesday, and I'd like to add two pieces to this.
What did you say?
I'd like to, I'd like to sponsor these, take them out of my committee, put them on the agenda review, and then have them be able to move forward to the regular council meeting next Tuesday. I got to take them out of my committee first, and, and I would like to discuss them.
Point of order. I think you guys can remove them probably to this agenda. They're already out of your committee, their own agenda reviews, uh, agenda, so we will remove them.
So, we will be removing fast-tracking resolution sixteen dash fifteen to the regular agenda meetings. The regular council meeting agenda.
That's what I was correcting, that's what I was getting clear for, because you're already in the, on the.
Right, and then I think he's trying to say that he would like to amend the agenda review meeting to reflect resolution seventeen dash fifteen and resolution eighteen dash fifteen and resolution. That's it, okay, those two resolutions dealing with surplus vehicles and authorizing the mayor to donate an inoperable lawnmower to Gordon Hay.
Okay, now, since you got a mouthpiece, do you wanna go back and tell me what you want?
Here's what I'd like to do. Sixteen fifteen is already out of my committee and on the agenda review. I'd like to discuss that, and then I would like to take resolution seventeen fifteen out of my committee and take resolution eighteen fifteen out of my committee and place on the agenda review tonight. As long as discussing.
Is that what your intent is for him to do?
I think he's gonna have to refer those two pieces of legislation to the regular.
Okay, so what we're doing now is that you are going to sponsor resolution sixteen fifteen, eighteen fifteen, seventeen fifteen, and move for the adoption once they've been, they're out of your committee, and they are out of your committee.
Yes.
At this point.
Yes, and I would like to discuss, and we have Chief of Staff, and we have someone else here. Sorry, I don't know his name, but he's here to talk about these.
Service supervisor, Mr. Marshall.
Apologize for that, Mr. Marshall.
Okay, is that that nice young man I called all the time? Okay, so, we are, I'm there, you're gonna read the.
I'll read the second, yes.
Everything into the record, and then we will have this done, all right?
Resolution seventeen fifteen is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell certain inoperable surplus vehicles through auction to scrap dealers or to sell the complete lot of salvage city vehicles through competitive bidding. Resolution seventeen fifteen, just for the note, is from the police department.
Okay.
Obviously, I designed seventeen fifteen, that's why it's separate, so not to confuse anybody.
Okay.
Eighteen fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to donate an inoperable lawnmower to Gordon Hay.
Who's boy name?
He's the representative in the back, he's the Forest Hills Parks Association president.
East Cleveland Park Association.
East Cleveland's Parks Association.
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
I miss, what's his name so much, Gus, he's gonna be up there.
I'm trying to carry up.
Okay, all right. Moving around along, what else do we have? Eighteen fifteen, that was.
Yes, I'll quick remember it.
Okay.
And have it for discussion.
Okay, now we have discussion. This stuff.
Okay, please, come on up. Ooh, I can speak.
It's a motherfucker.
It is, seventeen fifteen is the piece of legislation, I think that's the first one with the inoperable vehicles. Those vehicles are service vehicles, they are in our garage, in and around our garage, and have been in and around the garage, in some cases for decades. We have photos of some of them, they're inoperable, they take up a lot of space, and to a junker, they're worth something. We have received three bids, the highest bid is up to seventeen thousand dollars for the whole lot of it. Which is a pretty good, you know, a pretty good bid on things that we do not have the ability to repair, nor should we, because the cost of repairs on the annual basis will be greater than the value of the vehicle itself. And we, these are just the service vehicles. We have not yet gotten the quotes for eight, for probably sixteen fifteen.
And also, this is not something unusual, this is something we have done in past years to get rid of backlogs of stuff like this.
Normally, there's a combination, the, normally, the city engineer will get all the vehicles together, police, service, building and housing, water department, and do an auction. And their auctions would normally be for vehicles that are operable or that need some repair to become operable. And the balance of the vehicles that did not get sold would continue to sit. So, we wanted to deal with it from the perspective of those vehicles that no longer run and no longer can be used. If you like, before, this is, it's a two-reading thing, you can come out to the service department and get a complete tour, if you like, of each vehicle before it goes into second reading. And it's, it's a, I think it's a good thing to clear out the space, as well as make some money while we're doing it.
Yeah.
The seventeen, that's for both of us or one of us?
One. Sixteen fifteen, we have not yet required or inquired about what the value of the stuff is. And we have not sought quotes yet.
Wait, seventeen is for sixteen fifteen or for seventeen fifteen?
Whichever one is the service vehicle, I can't tell which one is what. Sixteen fifteen is for the service vehicle, okay, it's sixteen fifteen. Seventeen fifteen is separate, it's police vehicles.
So, we don't, did we get a quote for this? Did we give any information on the seventeen fifteen?
I think that's my data, not the price of.
Okay, so, we, we'll have to get the numbers, because you can't pass something if you don't know what the.
Let me see what it says. What does the, what does the bid include?
What happens is, three bidders came out and looked at the vehicles. Two of the, two of the bidders, they pretty much bid at the same, one hundred and thirty dollars per ton, two thousand dollars, two thousand pounds. And one guy came out, and he looked at everything, and just gave a flat-out price of seventeen fives for everything.
So, that's still just one?
Sixteen.
Sixteen fifteen.
And they're all gonna scrap this stuff.
So, now, on the other, on the other, there's a police guard, that's gonna take care of all the cars that are on that fence.
You see that, yeah, exactly, that's the, that's the second piece of legislation.
Is any of them up here, say, off park?
There's probably some of them back there too.
I'm actually working on that right now, I had a bidding for that tomorrow. Companies come out to bid on that tomorrow, police cars.
Okay, so, this is the first reading you're gonna have something for us in a couple of days?
Yes, I will.
For sixteen fifteen, we will provide the council clerk tomorrow with a copy of the quotes that were, and the copy of the quotes, which includes what they wanted to pay. Was any of, was it all, was any of it in writing, because they had to provide it in writing? It never should have been all.
I actually have one of my left on my desk, but I have the other two right here. The highest bid and the bid of pretty much the same, the two companies bid at the same. And I have the other bid, right, they faxed over to.
So, tomorrow, we'll provide the council clerk with the bids for, hopefully, both. So that you'll have them and know that these are real companies who made real bids on this stuff.
So, what do you do in a situation where both bids are the same?
We just choose one. There's no science to it, whichever one we believe will actually have the assets to pay. Or someone that we've had prior experience with, knowing that they will pay, knowing that they will come and get all the vehicles, not leave half the vehicles and try to give us half down and twenty-five percent down, so we review them. We look at what their history is in paying through the Dun &amp; Bradstreet. And we just, you know, we just choose, there's really no true science to it. As long as the bid is credible.
You guys are gonna have to send them the same letter saying that they were matched on the bid and that they have a certain amount of time in order to make good on the total amount or whatever.
No, we want it up, we want it.
We want it all up front, so you would have a deadline of five P M. to close the business on a certain date.
Come with your check.
And that's it, both of them get the same letter though, because it is.
No, 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 that's not how bids work.
Bids don't have to be.